Hello, my name is Eric Sonstegard, City of Auctionard resident and retired Assistant Police Chief from the Auctionard Police Department, now serving as one of your two Assistant City Managers for our awesome City of Auctionard. And I have the distinct pleasure to share this budget preview with you for the City of Auctionard Fiscal Year 2025-2026. So we'd like to start by giving you a little roadmap for where we will go and what we will discuss in this presentation. First, I'll provide a very brief summary of municipal budgeting that can help with the question, "Where do my taxes go?" I'll then give an overview of the various internal and external factors impacting our budget outlook. Then we will provide some highlights on our progress of the five-year city council priorities. And finally, we'll be covering the preliminary recommendations that we will be making to the city council on June 3rd for the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. Now, I know it's difficult to sit through a nearly 45-minute presentation like this, so I want to motivate you and reward you for sitting through this process. At the end of this process, you should be able to know a four-digit code that I give throughout the presentation. If you see me at a future city council meeting, you tell me that four-digit number, and I owe you a cup of coffee. The first digit of that code will be the number four, the number four. Let's get started. So let's dive right into the main drivers of revenue for the City of Auctionard, and let's start with property taxes. We get approximately 31% of our revenues in Auctionard from property tax each year. On this slide, you have an example of property taxes which residents that own property within the city pay. The largest portion of the tax goes to the schools, followed by the county. As a quick reminder, the city does not have any oversight over local schools or the funding that they receive. The city receives approximately 17% of every dollar of property tax. When you see that property tax bill, know that it is not all coming directly to the city. For example, if a resident pays a $5,000 property tax bill, the City of Auctionard is only receiving about $880 of that. So let's move on to sales tax. Another large portion of our revenue comes from sales taxes, and that's closer to 50%. About 47% of our revenue comes from sales tax. Effective April 1st, 2021, the sales tax in Auctionard became 9.25%. The state gets the largest share of sales tax at just under 4%. Just over 3% of the 9.25% that you pay in Auctionard comes to the city. That 3% is made up of Measure E, a 1% base tax which frequently gets called the Bradley-Burns, Measure O that was implemented in 2008, and a very small portion of the Prop 172 Public Safety Tax. Measure O, which is part of the 3% I mentioned, sunsets in 2029, and there's going to be a lot of discussion about that sunsetting in this presentation moving forward. At that time, our sales tax will revert back to being 8.75%. Measure O's sunsetting equates to a loss of about $20 million in today's dollars in revenue every year. Some of you might wonder what items are exempt from sales tax. There's things like groceries, prescription drugs, utilities, plants or seeds used for food, and packaged foods and snacks and such. Just for an example, on a $20 shirt, you pay $1.85 in sales tax. The city gets about 60 cents of that $1.85. You know, as a resident, I've often heard from friends and neighbors something to the effect of, "Auctionard has the highest sales tax in the state." That's simply not true. As of 2025, there are over 140 cities in California that have a higher sales tax rate than Auctionard, many with rates well over 10%, including Santa Monica at 10.75% and Lancaster and Palmdale at 11.25%. This slide is affectionately titled "Unknown New World Order." And despite being stable and proposing a balanced fiscal year 2025-26 budget, the road ahead is still very uncertain. There's a variety of local, regional, national, and even global factors that impact us here in beautiful Auctionard. Economic and political turbulence at all levels of government pose a risk of kind of derailing the conversations from what is best for our community and our residents into maybe what is best for my political party, or what is best for me as an individual. You can see some of the items on this slide, and I'll touch on just a couple of them. The current US inflation rate is 2.3% for the 12 months ending April 2025. And you know, while that has cooled from its highs during the pandemic, it's still a factor that impacts our residents and visiting consumers. A term we like to use, chaotic fluidity, within the state and federal budget processes could have grave impacts on us here in Auctionard, and we'll talk a little bit more about that moving forward. Our city continues to experience a myriad of different forms of litigation that cost the city valuable dollars that could be spent on services for our community, and also consume precious staff time, distracting them from focusing on some of our council priorities. Sales tax revenue growth for much of California has flattened out throughout 2024 and as we enter 2025 and late 2025. Auctionard has just now begun to experience this, and due to a new law working its way through our state legislature that could affect the tax distribution associated with facilities like Amazon Warehouse, we are very likely to see a sales tax revenue dip in the upcoming years, and we can talk a little bit more about that online sales tax reimportionment in a little bit. We spoke of chaotic fluidity at the state and federal levels on the previous slide, and this is just some additional illustrations that just kind of show how these unknowns can impact us here in Auctionard, and whether it's in cuts in federal housing subsidies, cuts to public education, cuts to medical services, or even at the state level. You know, a lot of people don't realize that 35% of the state budget comes from federal funds, and so when the federal funds dry up, it then trickles down to the state funds drying up, and in past budget crises, where do the states look? They look to the cities. And in the past, California has borrowed from the property tax revenues of local governments like Auctionard to cover their budget shortfalls. So these are all things, kind of all ripple effects that could ultimately impact Auctionard in the coming months. This is certainly a sobering slide for me, and I hope you take a moment to really look at the headlines here. You know, while Auctionard is fairly stable after years of financial instability, with the voters' approval of Measure E and the opening of the Amazon Warehouse, these headlines are examples of how the economic impacts, inflation partnered with decreased consumer spending can impact the operations of local government. All of these headlines are from the last two months and illustrate how precarious city finances can become during times of economic and political turbulence. These are communities, many very similar to Auctionard, that are facing severe deficits that will inevitably result in a reduction in services, and for some cities, even layoffs of longtime employees. So while we've worked very hard in Auctionard to kind of dig out of the hole we were in a decade ago, these headlines are a pretty cautionary tale and a stark reminder of what can happen in the blink of an eye. Continuing with our theme of the unknowns facing us in the next few years, even the professional forecasts are filled with somewhat unprecedented uncertainty. The question marks on this slide were not added by our staff. These are actual forecasts derived from an economic outlook out of UCLA. Never in recent times have we seen so many items ending in question marks. As the political winds continue to go back and forth at the state and national level, we'll continue to see this uncertainty, even as the professionals attempt to forecast what our economy is going to look like in the coming years. Okay, for those of you that have stuck around, at least for this long, you know, the second digit of that code I told you about at the beginning of the presentation is six. The second digit of the code is six. So this slide might be familiar to some of you that have seen our budget presentations before, but I want to walk you through a little history of kind of where we came from and where we are now. Certainly want to remind folks that not very long ago, literally about five years ago, we were facing a $9.2 million structural deficit. The city council made some extremely difficult cuts, including laying off over 30 employees. We worked through that, including withstanding a global pandemic. Thankfully, the voters had enough confidence in city staff to give us Measure E, which really helped us climb our way back out of the hole, and you can see it illustrated here on this slide. With approval, the city council's five-year priorities starting in fiscal year 2021-2022, council approved restoration to some of the services and programs, such as restoring proper maintenance of our parkways, medians, trees, streets, and alleys, restoring youth and senior programs, improving the permit process, and even investing in cybersecurity for the first time. In that same year, the Auctionard Amazon Fulfillment Center opened, which brought a real positive impact to our general fund revenues and more than 1,500 great jobs with benefits to our community and our residents. External factors such as the supply chain disruptions, labor shortages, and inflation affect how quickly we can restore services, complete, or in some cases, you know, start projects. One of the biggest single factors that has slowed us down is ongoing litigation as it pertains to bonding for large capital projects. This has really halted our ability to use a primary tool, which is municipal bonds, to fund large infrastructure projects, such as paving our roads and building city facilities like senior centers. Despite all those external factors, you know, each year we make adjustments, we maintain stability, and we really focus on self-reliance for the future. This year's budget is still positive. It's still cloudy, you can see the clouds in the image here. We're still walking a steady incline, and you can see all the different things that are kind of on the horizon that we're facing. But for our fifth year in a row, we're not facing any budget or service cuts of any size. It's simply a question of what we can afford to restore and invest in for the upcoming year, and as I alluded to earlier, we have to plan for the sunsetting of Measure O, which is a very real potential for the loss of nearly $20 million as a revenue source to the city ending in March 2029. So let's transition to the city council's established five-year priorities. These priorities you see on the screen were developed by the city council in the midst and shadow of a global pandemic, and really captured many of the hopes and dreams of the residents of our community. You can see on the slide they were categorized into five areas: quality of life, economic development, public safety, infrastructure and natural resources, as well as organizational effectiveness. You'll see some of the yellow highlighting, and these were really priorities or projects that were new and weren't something that had already been identified or was being worked on prior to the development of these priorities. You'll also see certain of the priorities that have red highlighting around them. These are projects or areas that we've identified as large capital projects that could certainly be paid for by the financing through municipal bonds. On the next following slides, I'll touch on a few priorities. I'm not going to read all the info on the next few slides, but please take the time to read the slide or the significant updates that staff put a lot of time and effort in in including not only in this presentation, but the proposed digital online budget. Wow, there's a lot of stuff on this slide. This is the quality of life category that includes things like restoring and enhancing our youth programs. Prior to Measure E, the city's recreation staff served nearly 98,000 young people through its recreation centers and youth programming. As part of the city's restoration efforts in this upcoming fiscal year, the recreation staff is projected to serve nearly 147,000 youth, a nearly 50% increase over the last couple of years. Major recreational program investments have included reopening the Dursley Youth Center, extending Colonia Basketball Open Gym hours to serve an additional 250 youth each week. Another quality of life priority is to restore and enhance our senior programs. Our Colonia Gym now offers pickleball for seniors, and we have a new cyber seniors program that helps train local seniors on how to navigate their digital devices, and somebody that is quickly reaching that age, I could use it as well. Homelessness is a crisis, but we continue to increase supportive services and anticipate that the new Casa de Carmen and Auctionard Navigation Center, a facility that will include a 110-bed shelter and 56 permanent support housing units, will open in September of this year. Another slide chock full of really exciting things and real testament to our staff and our council for prioritizing some of these things. Within the economic development category, we are finishing up the design stage for improvements to the Fourth Street Corridor between the train station and downtown. This project will include curb extensions, crosswalks, bike lanes, bike racks, and lighting to help improve the experience of pedestrians and cyclists moving throughout the downtown area. We're anticipating construction to begin in 2026, and we're really, really excited about what that's going to do for the downtown area. Construction's underway on three new hotels that'll certainly increase transient occupancy tax revenue for the city. And the city's first gateway monument sign was installed in April of 2025 in South Auctionard at Pleasant Valley Road and Auctionard Boulevard. The monument sign features vibrant colors and lighting at night to proudly display the city's name. The next priority, infrastructure and natural resources, has seen significant impacts related to many of the external and social impacts that we discussed on previous slides. Some of these, as you might remember, include ongoing litigation impacting the city's ability to finance large capital projects through the municipal bonding process, a competitive labor market that's been made that much more difficult due to the fires that ravaged Los Angeles County early this year, which will most likely envelop a lot of the construction labor market during the rebuilding process, and unreliable supply chain issues related geopolitical factors such as tariffs and potential trade wars. The city council priorities include restoring proper street paving cycles and repairing alleys. Since 2021, with the voters' approval of Measure E, the city has invested over $72 million to restore Auctionard's streets and alleys after many years of deferred maintenance, bringing our Pavement Condition Index, the PCI, which is the grade out of 100 for our streets from a 64 to our current PCI of 67. Another aspect of the infrastructure and natural resources priority that we've made significant progress in is restoring proper maintenance of parkways, medians, and tree trimming. With Measure E, we were able to increase our park mowing schedule, increased our tree pruning from less than 2,000 trees annually up to at least 9,000 trees annually, and you can see it every day when you drive around this beautiful city. While public safety remains a primary function of every local government, it's still important to emphasize some of the highlights from our amazing police and fire departments. If you're interested in more information about the services both these departments provide to our community, I really encourage you to check out their websites and follow them on social media, as they do a great job of connecting with our residents and keeping them updated on what they're doing in our neighborhoods. One of the components of this public safety priority is maintaining 911 emergency response time as a public safety priority. The Auctionard's Emergency Communications Center answers 911 calls 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. The police department's average response time to an emergency call was 3 minutes and 46 seconds in 2024. This compares to 2023's average of 4 minutes and 13 seconds. Another priority was maintaining fire protection services, and one of the key components of that is smoke detector installations, and although the fire department is understaffed compared to other California city averages, it continues to catch up on staffing and focus on fire prevention efforts, including installing more than 2,500 smoke alarms in 2024, making over 2,800 individuals in over 740 homes a lot safer. Also want to highlight one thing in the bottom right of this slide titled "essential vehicle order delays." This is something that has really compounded over the last five to seven years. Historically, for instance, when we would like order a new police vehicle, we might get that vehicle in three to six months and have that out in service. But just as an example, and it's illustrated there, the police department received authorization last July to inquire 10 patrol vehicles, and as the time of this report, they have yet to be placed into service. There is a tremendous delay in vehicle procurement, both in the police and fire industry. As another example, a delivery process for a fire engine that once took one and a half years now can take as much as five years. This results in some of our fire apparatus staying with us, let's just say, a lot longer than it should. One fire engine remained in service for 18 years, which is six years past its expected lifespan. Three new fire engines were ordered in January of 2022, and we expect to finally take arrival of them in 2026. But looking ahead, the city still needs to order another fire engine, ladder truck, and a search and rescue vehicle to replace the units that will be retiring by fiscal year 2029-2030. So the final city council priority we wanted to give an update on was organizational effectiveness. And as referenced when we talked about the man in the hole, Auctionard has faced some pretty significant budget challenges in the recent years. We are making slow and steady progress, kind of securing Auctionard's long-term financial stability, including increasing revenues, which has allowed us to replenish the city's reserves from as low as 2.2%. There was only $3.4 million in city reserves in 2020 and 2021, to the current level that we'll discuss later of 16.6% as laid out in the city council's approved reserve policy. One of the largest investments in areas of progress we've experienced is within our information technology department, with a real strong focus on improving cybersecurity. In the last four years, our restoration budgets, investments in IT totaled nearly $9 million, and that excludes the investment the city made in its 30-year-old computer system, commonly referred to as the ERP or the Enterprise Resource Planning Program. So although there are many staffing needs, we've made real measured restorations to staffing levels, taken a real keen look at all the different departments and all the responsibilities. You know, this is a delicate balance with the labor market challenges. We've launched staff training and development programs, but as you can see at the bottom of the slide, part of being an effective organization is securing long-term financial sustainability. We've discussed many of those items on previous slides, but it's important to keep them kind of on our front burner per se as we move towards our budget recommendations for the coming years. So just a couple more slides on the progress that we've experienced and the progress that we continue to make, and some of the things on this slide are not quite as visible to you, the residents, but they're still very important for our ability to continue to provide services to our community. It's important that Auctionard constantly adheres to these seven key financial principles so we can improve our bond and overall credit rating, which helps us achieve the council priorities. Our goal is to move to a double-A bond rating, and we can discuss that further in an upcoming slide. Doing so will save the city and therefore owe the residents a lot of money in the future when we issue debt. I'll hit on some of the high points on this slide, including the first one, maintaining a fund balance. As a best practice, the Government Financial Officers Association, or the GFOA, recommends that cities maintain a fund balance of at least two months of the general fund's expenditures to cover the city finances in the event of an emergency. This is what we commonly refer to as reserves, or known as the rainy day fund, and they can be used to fund everyday general services such as fire and police during a downturn, or potentially if we have a natural disaster or a large accident in the city that impacts city services. During our challenging budget years, you know, you remember when the man in the hole was really at the bottom of the hole back in 2019 and 2020, the city was operating with about a 2.2% reserve, a little over $3 million, but we've worked diligently to get that number back up to 16.6%, which again is in line with the city council's approved reserve policy, and we recommend maintaining that level in fiscal year 2025 and 2026. As it pertains to debt capacity, our debt capacity has certainly improved since the city has been unable to issue new debt due to ongoing litigation. In addition, our revenues have grown, so we've seen our performance in this area and this financial principle stay strong over the last couple of years. One thing that residents might not necessarily realize is important in our credit rating, but it's stable management. And our city manager, as well as many of our department directors, have been here for many years. This will be the beginning of the city manager's eighth year with the City of Auctionard. And the credit raters really look at that as a demonstration of how stable the government is, as well as how proactive they are in planning for the future. And as we discuss the sunsetting of Measure O, it's something that the credit raters take into account as an example of stable management. You'll see cybersecurity on the slide, and as I mentioned earlier, we've invested heavily in the last three years in cybersecurity, and we continue to do that. These are some of the, you know, quote-unquote "behind-the-scenes" investments that are vital. Cybersecurity commitments include, you know, testing and auditing our infrastructure for vulnerabilities, increasing the layers of access verification, replacing obsolete hardware and unsupported software across the organization, and many other very technical things that I probably don't understand and I probably can't explain to you anyway, so I think you get the idea. And then finally, financial reporting. We have been very proud that our audits have produced clean opinions from external auditors, five consecutive years with an audited, unmodified opinion, and for 13 in a row, our Financial Corrective Action Plan resulted in no new findings and no repeat findings. So these financial principles, along with increasing our credit rating, are important to, in order to lower our financial risks. Lower the cost to finance infrastructure, increase capacity to debt-finance infrastructure, give city council access to funds to deliver services to residents, create more financial flexibility over the long term, and allow us to weather a downturn in the economy, and create credibility with our residents regarding the city's ability to manage you, the taxpayers' money. So we look forward to continuing our progress in these principles, and we're hoping if we get through the existing bond litigation, that we have some exciting things on tap for you, the resident, in the near future. So just briefly on this slide, we talked a little bit on the previous slide. The city's issuer credit rating went from A to A+, and all the way up to double-A minus, which marked the Auctionard's sixth upgrade by S&amp;P. Improving our credit rating is very important because, like I stated earlier, it lowers the cost to finance infrastructure for our community. Think of it for you or a community member as kind of your personal credit rating, and you simply, you get better rates for loans, for car loans, for house loans, when you have a better credit rating. And so this is really what this represents for the city as an entity, so we are in a much better position today financially because of that. And finally, before we move into our proposed budget recommendations for the upcoming year, it's important for us to continue to emphasize the sunsetting of the Measure O sales tax in early 2029. For those of you that have been in Auctionard for an extended period of time and were here in 2008, the voters chose to approve Measure O, which was a half-cent sales tax, and that sales tax has brought about incredible improvements and restorations within the city the last 20 years. But that is due to sunset in 2029. It was a 20-year sales tax, and we'll discuss that further in upcoming slides, but it's something that really sets the foundation for decisions to be made, even in this upcoming budget process, even though it's three to four years away. As a city, when we talk about financial stability, it's something that we need to set that foundation for decisions being made right now. All right, you made it to the proposed budget highlights. So I'm going to transition now into our preliminary recommendations that we'll be making to the city council for the fiscal year 2025 and 2026 budget. For those of you that have hung in with me on this presentation on the long haul, you might remember the kind of the game I played at the beginning, so the third digit of that code I want you to remember is eight. The third digit of the code is eight. The city is proposing a conservative budget in the upcoming fiscal year, reflecting approximately a 3.3% increase in both our revenue and expenses, a figure of approximately $8 million. This slide displays what we affectionately like to call a donut chart. Some of you might think that I would particularly like this, which includes many of the figures I mentioned earlier in this presentation related to sales tax and property tax. As I previously mentioned, property taxes are about a third of our revenues, and sales tax, in this case the Bradley-Burns and Measure E, are just under 50%. Other revenue sources listed here include business license taxes and transient occupancy tax. That is what is commonly charged to hotel guests visiting the City of Auctionard, as well as non-tax revenues, which might include fines, permitting fees, and other items. In total, the general fund revenues are proposed to be approximately $243.7 million. For those of you that are into a little trivia, the term Bradley-Burns comes from the Uniform Local Sales and Use Tax Law. There was a California law enacted in 1955 to standardize local sales and use tax collection, and it was named after its legislative sponsors, Assemblyman George And it was named after his legislative sponsors, Assemblyman George Bradley and Senator John Burns. This chart reflects our proposed expenditures and recommendations on how to allocate the general fund based on the nature of that expenditure. We are proposing two hundred and forty-three point seven million dollars in expenditures, meaning we have a balanced budget. Uh it's pretty easy to tell from this chart that we are in the people business. Um I I like to say a a lot after thirty-five years in local government that uh we don't make a product and we don't uh make a widget on an assembly line. We are in the service business and service is provided by people. And uh it it, you know, like most municipalities, especially full-service cities, the general fund's largest expenditure is on our people. It's on our labor to provide the essential public safety, recreation, project management, engineering and administrative services required to operate a large and complex city. So you can see salaries and benefits represent over sixty percent of the city's budget. The next largest expense category is is transfers out and it's a little complicated, so let me provide a little explanation for that. This covers things like transfers to our capital improvement project funds for new capital improvement projects, transfers to internal service funds which provide I T facility maintenance. Uh it could include liability insurance and fleet services. The 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 next biggest item is services and this can include a variety of different things. It's mostly professional services and that that uh primarily lie in the public works department such as engineering, consulting. Uh you have our animal shelter, you have legal services that we contract out, audit services that we contract out, homeless services that we contract out, plan checking and community development. So there there are a lot of different factors that that go into that services. You see supplies there that could be equipment, could be training, it could be uniforms. And then you see utilities and energy and that's mainly electricity, gas, vehicle fuel, water, sewer and trash that are costs associated with running some of these general fund departments. This chart reflects our proposed expenditures and recommendations on how to allocate the general fund based on specific departments. Public safety is a big portion of the expenditures, but as I went over previously, both of our departments here are significantly understaffed as compared to other agencies in surrounding communities. And and what this slide slide really does is illustrate the core of what city government is and what city government here is is to provide. Um you know, the police department, the fire department and public works, uh they they make up nearly seventy percent of the expenses for the general fund. But if you think about what our local government is here to do, we're here to protect our our community. We're here to respond to nine-one-one calls. We're here to respond to the medical needs of our residents. And we're here to repair and maintain the infrastructure, the streets, the parks, the the sidewalks, the alleys. And so this this is a, this slide is a really good illustration of of really what local government provides for its residents and its community members. Here we have our estimated uh preliminary revenues and proposed expenditures for all funds. This snapshot shows in all funds revenue totaling five hundred and ninety-three point three million dollars and proposed expenditures totaling six hundred and sixty million dollars. The financials here seen on this screen are also discussed in more detail by the finance department's budget presentation that accompanies the budget agenda item. And I I really encourage you, uh after, of course, you're done watching my presentation, to uh hop on over to that presentation and uh get maybe a little more detail about what you see on this slide. Uh while um the figures here present a balanced uh general fund, you'll see that um the other funds have a uh revenue deficit, but there's no new debt that's being incurred by any of those funds. Uh that deficit is is being covered and and brought forward by existing fund balance. And like I said, the finance department can provide a little more uh detail about that. As it pertains to Measure O, um Measure O expenditures exceed revenues by nearly ten million dollars. But this this is part of a a concerted and long-term plan to utilize both a mixture of existing fund balance and new tax revenues to pay for projects. As we've said many times in this presentation, Measure O has a surplus fund balance that will be required to service debt obligations and and that's gonna continue beyond the sunset date of March thirty-first, twenty twenty nine. You'll see the Public Safety Retirement Fund there. This is commonly referred to as the Carmen override. This enables the city to fund about twenty million dollars in public safety retirement costs from tax increments to city businesses and resi- residents that uh would otherwise be charged to the general fund. The eligible expenses are a- about twenty-two point six million dollars and the other two million dollars, like I stated earlier, is being funded from brought forward fund balance. You'll see a term there called internal service funds and and w- we refer to those as I S F. And and an internal service fund is a fund that provides benefits primarily in the form of goods or services to other funds, departments or agencies on a cost reimbursement basis with the goal to to break even rather than to make a profit. The city utilizes I S Fs to provide the liability insurance, workers' compensation insurance, uh I T services and telecommunications, facilities maintenance and janitorial services, uh fleet services and fuel costs and utility buildings. Uh as I stated earlier, the I S S has higher expenses than revenues as it's consuming a portion of existing fund balances that has been built up over the last couple of years. So this slide is certainly where the rubber starts to hit the road. And despite nearly twenty million dollars in general fund and Measure O department needs that were identified uh by our department heads for the upcoming fiscal year, due to many of the social and external impacts that we've already covered in this presentation, uh we are only recommending approximately two point eight million uh of that tw- nearly twenty million dollars in requests to be funded to maintain a balanced budget. Some examples of what we did not recommend fund include restoring some additional youth and senior programs, in-car camera systems for police vehicles, additional fire department personnel, a training needs across multiple city departments, additional fire apparatus, including engines and ladder trucks and some much-needed remodels to fire stations. Here on this slide, you see a majority of the things that make up that two point eight million dollars in supplemental requests that we discussed on the previous slide. And I just wanna highlight a couple of items here. Most of the things are self-explanatory. But you'll see in the upper left, the outfitting and upfitting of fire apparatus. These are fire trucks and engines that we purchased in early twenty twenty-two that we have yet to take receipt of. We do uh plan on them being delivered in early twenty twenty-six. And when we get those fire trucks and engines, we have to outfit them. We have to put the hoses and the the axes and all the equipment that our firefighters need to do their daily job. So that's what that uh those two charges are for. And similarly, if you look on the right-hand side, you'll see an amount of five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the police department vehicle leasing program. And these are just ongoing costs that are involved in maintaining a strong and healthy p- fleet of police vehicles. Um we have a lot of older vehicles, some with over a hundred or a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles. And this is just part of cycling them out and getting new vehicles in. So we have the ability to respond to calls uh when we are called. One more uh cost I want to highlight is the Ventura County animal shelter costs. For many years, the city of Oxnard has contracted with the county of Ventura for animal shelter services. And when those expenses and the costs of running that shelter rise, those are passed on to all the cities that contract with the county of Ventura. City of Oxnard, obviously being the biggest city in county, uh oftentimes bears the brunt of a lot of those costs. And that's what you see reflected in this figure of a little over eighty-five thousand dollars. These are additional proposed general fund investments for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. And I will highlight a couple of the things that you see on the screen. You'll see in addition to the two point eight million dollars in department requests that we discussed on a previous slide, uh department heads and city management also identified uh new positions and reclasses of existing positions that will result in additional one point one million dollars in expenditures. Above that, you can see approximately three point eight million dollars in labor union contracts. These were previously signed uh contracts that included salary increases and benefit increases for employees that will take effect in fiscal year twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. Some of the one-time fund, the one-time general fund capital projects that will have been identified uh for investment in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six include uh additional arterial street resurfacing uh at a total of six point two million dollars. And if you see on the bottom right, uh these are one of those items that uh become state mandated. And uh we have a large city fleet here in the city of Oxnard and state law requires that a certain percentage of that fleet be green or clean vehicles. And thus, we are mandated to have a certain number of electric vehicle charging stations to service that portion of our fleet. So folks, here's another slide where the rubber really hits the road. And we've discussed on several occasions up with our time together about our reserves or what we like to refer to as our rainy day fund. Uh this is in accordance with the city council's approved reserve policy that has uh uh within it a goal of achieving sixteen point six percent of operating expenses. In fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, city council invested nearly nine point five million dollars and really accelerated our progress towards achieving that goal. And in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, we are recommending recommending that we maintain that sixteen point six percent reserve policy by investing another one point five million dollars in our reserves. You might ask, well, where does that figure of sixteen point six percent come from? Well, that sixteen point six percent represents two months of operating expenses or one-sixth of the year and is really best practice and industry standard as recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association. On the right-hand side, you will see uh the remaining fund balance that we have identified as a recession protection fund. These are one-time temporary funds that we're recommending. We do not spend at this time, but rather assign as a form of recession protection as we navigate all of the uncertainty that we've discussed the last forty-five minutes. If you remember those headlines we discussed earlier, Oxnard's very fortunate to be in a position to have this opportunity to really optimize our self-reliance and weather the storms that we know are coming down the pipe. Here's an overview of the proposed Measure O expenditures, a vast majority of which are one-time expenditures. And we've discussed that uh a little bit and and will uh in a future slide. Uh many of these projects have gone in front of the Measure O Oversight Committee as well as being a part of the two-year cycle of the C I P program that was presented to city council on May twentieth. We're almost there, folks, and I really appreciate you sticking with us and taking the time to listen to this presentation today. One of the most important things to discuss when approaching every budget is that we are looking out many years ahead and being fiscally responsible. And we've discussed that uh during our time together today. And what I mean by that is we plan our current budget uh with even the twenty twenty-nine budget in mind. And for those of you who follow City Hall, you probably already know and and for those that have stuck with me today know that that is when Measure O sunsets. That could be as big as a twenty million dollar annual drop i- i- in revenue for the city's general fund budget. And we need to consider that now rather than coming up to twenty twenty-eight and suddenly um looking around the corner and realizing that uh we don't, we haven't achieved that self-reliance that we've talked about today. So. The Measure O Oversight Committee recommended and the city council approved a weaning schedule in twenty twenty-two. The Measure O weaning schedule ensured that we were slowly and methodically moving Measure O-funded ongoing programs to an alternative source such as the general fund. And this slide kind of illustrates some of the things uh that we have moved over year to year. Uh as of today, the general fund has absorbed uh over twelve million dollars of Measure O programs and staffing. In fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, uh staff uh weaned a little over one million dollars from Measure O to the general fund. And this year, we're looking, we're recommending that we do uh about the same amount. Um some of those items will include maintenance of the city's intelligence transportation systems, the preschool, the U program, and some maintenance related to College Park. Well, folks, you made it. And for those of you that uh stuck with me throughout the entire presentation, if you're wondering about that fourth digit of that puzzle that I uh presented at the beginning, the fourth digit is two. The fourth digit is two. So uh if you see me in an upcoming city council meeting, he can give you that four-digit code. I owe you a cup of coffee. So to to wrap this all up, I I really wanna remind you of an earlier slide. And uh it it had to do with the clouds that represent the many uncertainties that we that we face. Generally speaking, we are seeing a tightening economy in California. As a whole, we're seeing some of the sales tax revenue flatten out, uh which means less revenue for Oxnard. Um you might remember the headlines. Uh it took us two slides to show those headlines. But local governments throughout California are experiencing budget shortfalls. Um and uh Oxnard will be there soon enough if we don't practice uh prudent and a conservative uh fiscal planning and budgeting. Uh we're also seeing changes among traditional retailers. Uh many national retail chains are closing brick and mortar locations. Oxnard benefited really as an outlier, given our our passing of Measure E. And our recent addition, you know, to our tax base of a of a large Amazon warehouse and distribution facility. Some of the challenges that our cities face, you know, eh all the cities in California face, you know, the impacts of inflation, political uncertainty, a competitive labor market, unreliable supply chain. Other challenges are more unique to us here in Oxnard, such as a law that's making its way through the state legislature that could really impact the large portion of our sales tax allocation in Oxnard. But despite those clouds and, you know, the uphill walk that we we kind of illustrated in that man in the hole um slide, we are recommending some increases in expenses related to necessary items that we've identified. You know, uh you know, whether it's utility increases or state mandates or more specifically increases aligned with the city council priorities. But I wanna end today's presentation on a positive note. This year's budget is positive. And for a fifth year in a row, we're not facing any budget or service cuts of any kind. We have a balanced general fund budget and we are able to maintain our reserves consistent with the city council's approved reserve policy. So that finishes our presentation for today. Before we, before I leave you today, I I, you know, there are traditional ways to stay involved, like attending the city council and the committee meetings on on Tuesday nights. But from a practical standpoint, if you can't always get out, I really encourage you to read the city manager's budget message. And from there, you you may be intrigued to take a deeper dive into the information on the website. And you can see here on this slide that the proposed budget and all the um attached documents, that it will be published online by the end of this week. Uh we will hold a public hearing at city council on June third, where we invite you to come down, provide input to the city council, tell us about what your priorities are as residents of the city of Oxnard. Once that input is received from community members in the city council, we plan to come back to the city council on June seventeen for an adoption of the budget and move forward into fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six and 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 take all the great things that are included in this budget and make Oxnard uh a a better city. So with that, I I really wanna thank you for making it through the end of this presentation. I I I appreciate you spending uh nearly fifty minutes of uh of your time with me today. And uh I look forward to seeing you at an upcoming city council meeting. Thank you.